With seven present, we have a quorum.
I'd like to thank in the back Rod Widdell and Connor Childers, who are working behind the scenes to produce our broadcast on Channel 29. Thank you guys for being back there and making us look good. We do not have any public speakers for tonight, so I won't read the instructions. Are there any board member comments at this time? Oh, go ahead, David, Mr. Segal.
Thank you. I certainly hope this doesn't become what I do at each board meeting. But I do want to extend my condolences to the, again, the family and friends of Aleah Moore from Auburn, the senior at Auburn, who passed away a week and a half ago. Just very, very sad. I think as board members, we all do this, this work because we love public school. And it's just very sad, and we feel the loss, you know, when one of the students that we try to serve passes. So just great sadness.
Thank you. I have two things I'd like to bring up. One is just to mention that on Thursday, Dr. Jarrett and I will be attending the Alignment Rockford Strategic Planning Session, so we're looking forward to that while helping that group put their next strategic plan together. And then Friday or two ago, I got to participate in Donuts for Dads at West Middle School as a grandpa. And so I want to thank West and Mr. Davis for putting on a really nice program, just other than painting out donuts and juice or whatever. But they did have a speaker and talked about the importance and the role of fathers in the raising of their children, and the importance of education and the connection that fathers can make with that. So I appreciate that opportunity to be there. Any other board member comments? Mr. Connor.
I want to thank the Winnebago County Board for passing the traffic light at Prairie ville and the Cherry Valley Elementary School. Really appreciate their support.
Good. Okay, seeing no others, we'll move on then to the consent portion of our agenda, including the minute, meeting minutes of August 28, 2018, payroll, accounts payable, purchase orders, construction bid request log, contracts under 10,000, student travel and travel, the recurring contracts of Seven Islands for External Evaluation Services, the Circles of Learning Contract, the Infant Early Childhood Mental Health Consultant Contract, Sun Belt Contract for Speech and Language Pathology Coverage, the Independent Speech Contracts, Cumberland, the Stepping Stones Group for Contracted Teacher, the Innovative Learning Center Special Ed Night Class, the Curtley Technology Hosting Contract, and the Power School Student and Finance Application Contract, and the other consent items, including the Freedom of Information Log. Is there a motion and a second to approve these consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any consent items that board members wish to have pulled for separate consideration? Mr. Rollins?
Seven B Bravo and seven I.
Okay. Mr. Escobedo?
Six A Apple.
Six A. Okay. I'll have coordinator call the roll on the consent items not pulled.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
I'll take a motion and a second to approve the consent item six A, which is the meeting minutes from August 28.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll have coordinator call the roll on approval of item six A.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Abstain.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
The motion passes as six yeses, one abstain.
And I'll take a motion for the approval of item seven B, which is the Circles of Learning Contract.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Questions or discussion? None. Have the coordinator then call the roll on the approval of Circles of Learning Contract.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Abstain.
The motion passes as six yeses, one abstain.
And I'll take a motion and a second for the approval of item seven I, which is the Power School Student and Finance Application Contract.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Rollins?
Yeah, I pulled this because it's a lot of money and it's a really old contract. So this contract was entered into originally by Dr. Hernandez in 2009. And as I understand it, this is just a renewal of the existing contract with maybe some different fees on it. So I have a lot of questions, I guess, just because it's the amount of money that we're talking about. And I had some specific questions, but before we get to the specific questions, can somebody tell me in plain English what this contract is for?
Yes, so I'll invite our new Executive Director of Technology, Jason Barthel, and I S Coordinator, Chris Tasky, to answer your questions.
Okay. Welcome, gentlemen. Hit the button to turn the microphone on there.
So I'll let Chris jump in first here. He's got a lot of the historical information. I'll jump in as necessary.
So this reoccurring contract, a recurring contract, covers our student information system, E-School Plus, that's used district-wide, as well as our HR payroll finance application that's used district-wide, and additional ancillary modules that we also use, including our purchasing workflow and purchase order system, as well as our travel leave request and a whole slew of other applications that fall under that umbrella.
Okay.
So this is all part of the Sun Guard system, as I understand it, what we refer to as the Sun Guard system?
Absolutely.
And so this is 300 and roughly, let's just call it roughly, $390,000 annually. Is that for everything that we do under Sun Guard, or these are just two components of what we do under Sun Guard? I mean, I'm trying to get a handle on what we're actually spending annually on this system.
Sure, so that total includes the Sun Guard suite, which is now Power School. So that includes all those products that I mentioned before, as well as our assessment and curriculum tool, Performance Plus, that we use throughout the district. So it includes all of those products under that one contract for that one vendor.
Okay.
Okay, and I assume it would be awfully hard to migrate at this point. How, I mean, how competitive is this? If we had a different system in place, would we be spending equivalent amounts, or?
It's very competitive. Just for comparison purposes, if you looked at what was paid for the Cronos HR module, it's very similar in terms of that. And it's actually very comparable, so to speak, for one module versus an entire suite.
So if I'm understanding this flow of documents correctly, we're simply renewing the existing contract. I just, I mean, one contract question I've got, I mean, this is an old contract, it was entered into in 2009, and it's a three-year contract with what we lawyers refer to as an evergreen provision, which means it automatically renews for additional three-year terms unless one party gives the other notice within 90 days before the commencement date. And I actually run across this more often than you might think, but I can't figure out when the commencement date is. I don't know what the date is when we would have to give notice to not renew this contract. Can you tell me what the commencement date is?
It would require significant planning on our part. So what we do on an annual basis is we reevaluate to ensure that it's meeting the needs of all the parties. So I would say, yeah, every summer would be the time where we would want to migrate away from the system like that.
But as I understand it, we're being locked in for additional three-year, an additional three-year term. So it doesn't look to me like it's an annual. It looks to me like they're three-year terms, unless something, unless there was a contract amendment at some point?
I can't speak to the terms.
Okay. Could I just suggest that if we have these discussions, you know, this happens a lot. I mean, this is not unusual. Old contract, nobody really knows what's in the contract because nobody bothers to read it. But you have a contract here that says it automatically renews for three-year terms unless you give a notice within a certain date, and I can't tell, and I'll bet nobody in this district can tell what that date is, because it's a commencement date that is based on when they started providing services in 2009. And good luck finding that date. So this would be a good opportunity to also maybe negotiate some cleanup with the vendor to get a specific date, so that everybody's got a, an actual date that everybody agrees to. I did have some questions just on numbers. So there is a PDSA attached to this. The executive summary, and some of this is, you know, close enough for government work, I guess, the numbers are only like $91 off, but the total costing executive summary is given is $388,592.64. The number in, under the budget details in the PDSA is 393-501-53, which is about $91 less. That number actually does match up with the two invoices that are attached. So I just don't know where the different number that's in the executive summary came from. But then the other question I've got is the PDSA in the Contract Details section has an initial cost number of $2,373,130. And what is that number?
So that total makes up the original purchase price and purchase cost of the software and all the licensing that was involved.
Back to 2009?
Correct.
Okay, and it's just showing up now in this PDSA?
Right, so we wanted to kind of paint a picture of what the history was of this based on, you know, the PDSA process that's now in place. So we wanted to kind of give you that before picture of what it costs to replace our old ancillary AS400 system with all of these new products, which was the Sun Guard suite. That was the total combined cost for everything, infrastructure, everything. So we've gone from that down to what we're paying annually now, which is roughly the 393-501-53. And the differences in the cost, which you mentioned earlier, was for Performance Plus, we went off in the executive summary, the initial cost was based on last year's renewal. We didn't receive this year's renewal until Wednesday of this week, or Wednesday of last week. So that's why there's a difference in cost, because we were able to include the updated costs in the PDSA from the invoices.
I mean, it's interesting to me that we're even getting annual changes in the cost, because it is supposed to be a three-year contract with fees attached. So I'm just going to suggest that somebody use this opportunity to clean things up. If you're looking at this, if everybody's looking at it as an annual renewal, then just do a contract amendment that makes it an annual renewal.
You got it.
You got to put a quarter in the slot.
Then it vibrates.
Sorry.
Or if my mind went with us.
Under the termination provisions, it does provide for a 30-day termination for convenience notice.
In the original contract?
Yes.
On both parties?
It's on page seven.
Okay.
Yes.
Would they have it read too?
It's customer.
Okay.
But the whole thing with it is, yes, I think it's probably time to really go through the contract again and take a look at it and see either addendum or get a new contract.
Page seven of that long contract that's attached?
Yes. It has all of the different terms and terminations.
Because I thought that the-
It's paragraph B, 11, it's 11B of the contract. It talks about for convenience.
Because there's this, there's a top-level contract, this four-page contract, which is at the top, which was what was signed, and that has a different term.
It needs cleanup.
Okay. All right.
Mr. Segal.
Mrs. McCullough.
Well, my question to both Legal and to Tim, having raised the issues that you've raised, is if it needs cleanup, why would I want to vote yes on this? I mean, I'm sure there's a time span, but they just sent it to you last week.
Will the services continue until we sign a new contract, or negotiate one, or what are we going to do here? Because I don't want to vote yes on something that you're going to clean up, because I'm-
You're really not, what you're voting on is not terminating the contract right now, because you already have an existing contract and contractual obligation. So what was put forth to you is an existing contract that obligates the district as well as an invoice. So it isn't a new contract or an addendum to a contract. You're really voting on whether or not to terminate a contract.
We're voting to terminate or to not terminate?
To not terminate.
And if there isn't supposed to be an escalation in the fees on a contract, if they have this evergreen piece, and there has been, is that what I understand that was just happened? Because you said we are voting on the fees as well.
Well, you have an invoice that's going to be, that is, that is out there to be paid. So I would say if the direction of the board is, let's renegotiate and take a look at it and see what we can do to clean up the contract language, we can certainly do that and then issue a notice that, if need be, in the future, because if you terminate it within 30 days, you need to have something to replace it with. And so it really-
Put us in a bind.
I think what this does is bring it to your attention that you have a really old contract out there that they have analyzed whether or not it's a viable contract, that the next step is, is this a service that, or a contract that you want to terminate, or at least do an addendum.
So cleaning it up doesn't mean that you're going to fix what, anything that we're voting on now.
That's correct.
Mr. Segal.
In the cleanup process, is there a way of finding out if Sun Guard can assume the responsibility that Curtley Technology is doing of hosting the AS400 data? And as long as Power School replaced AS400, can they absorb that and possibly gain some efficiency and save something we've already voted on?
So that's something we've already discussed with the Curtley Technologies. And my, and my plan moving forward is to look at finishing up within the next 12 to 18 months to get off of that Curtley contract, and so we don't no longer have to pay that fee. Normally, when you move to a new piece of software, a business application, you want to try to eliminate that old, and we're still relying on that old system right now for archival data. So that is a process that I'm working on with the team to build to do, whether it's with Business Plus or in Power School, or another avenue to build to reduce that $18,000 cost on the Curtley side. We are looking into that matter. And I just want to make a comment on contracts in general. One of the focuses I do have is reviewing all of the IT contracts that we have that we pay out on an annual basis, and going through those. And this one obviously came, I've been here since the 15th, so trying to get all these under my belt to see what we have out there and evaluating what are we using on them, what are we not? And is there a way to save some cost on there and also make sure that we're getting renewed contracts every year. What I've seen with software in the past and my other positions is we do see an amendment with that contract, or we do see an updated contract date, so we're having the latest and greatest as it comes to, in front of the board.
Well, if you need an expert on contract law, we happen to have one on the board. She sits right over here, who does it for a living, so. So, Mr. Connor?
Three suggestions. Number one, let's put a timeframe since, obviously, we're voting on not terminating the contract, but clearly there's been a desire to clean up some things. So from the IT side, if you could maybe put a timeframe on when it would take to, you know, clarify the language, clean that up, right? Because it seems like we've had a desire to do that. I think the second thing that I would suggest, in reading through part of this, is I think we have, what, one application that's still archiving data on the AS400? So I think the original language around why we went from the AS400 is kind of outdated at this point, frankly. The question I would have more is what alternatives do we have? Is it a Pearson? What is it? And I'm not suggesting we go to somebody else, but I think the natural question is, we've got, you know, 10 pieces of software for these folks, does this? I think sometimes having a diagram of how all that fits really does help, because then people can see what those components are. If this is going to come up, say yearly, or whatever the timeframe that you recommend, it would help to say, here are the things, because you just mentioned that, you know, if you look at, oh, boy, I'm going brain dead, what's their names? The fact that their software really amounts to the same amount for the entire thing.
Cronos.
Cronos, thank you. I mean, the point is, you could put that side by side in a diagram, and I think it'd be clearer that way. So that would be a suggestion. So number one is have a timeframe for when you would come back with any language cleanup. I think number two is, what are the viable alternatives essentially to what we have now? And maybe there are none, actually. I'm not asking you to do a bunch of work, but I think at least stating, these are competitive products, or there's really no single set of competitive. Because the one question I had in the back of my mind I should have asked, and I thought Mr. Rollins was going to ask it, is what does our spend look like over the last, say, five years in terms of this particular contract? And what do we think it is going forward? Is it going to be, you know, the 388 number, or 393, whatever it was in the contract? You know, does that look to be stable? You know, what things would we add that would add to that cost basis? So I think, so number one, again, timeframe. Number two is at least some kind of diagram and what alternatives we have. And then number three would be, here's our plan over the next two to three, four years, whatever, and the components, and if there are alternatives, that kind of a thing. I think that would help to summarize, at least for me, you know, visually, because a lot of the details are buried in there, but to make it easier to see. And then if I had a fourth suggestion, it would be, how does all this fit our plan? And I think we haven't had a chance to really sit down and talk, but with Mr. Barthel being new, but I think going forward, there's been a number of questions on how we're going to leverage all this, the decision ed. There's other pieces of this, and knowing where it would save us money, where there would be overhead, and having some kind of, again, picture of what this looks like would be really helpful. So those four suggestions would be something I would ask, and I will volunteer, because I happen to do some of this for a living, is I'll sit down and we can walk through some of this, like on the diagrams, things like that. Hopefully, that would make sense, so.
Any other comments? Mrs. McCullough?
So just to understand, bear be clear, we really don't have a choice. We can't vote no, because-
We don't have a choice.
Our hands are tied again.
Right.
I think I had this comment last time, because we wouldn't have anything in place, 30 days, we can't get anything else in place, right? So is that my understanding right?
That's correct.
We don't really have a choice here, okay.
Okay.
Nor would we want to, Mr. Connor.
Nor would we, yeah. We'll, I'll have coordinator then call the roll on the approval of item seven I.
Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We are now on to the closed session consent agenda items, including the following: the appointment of Dennis Schwab as a 10-month assistant principal at Eisenhower Middle School, the appointment of Jeffrey Saganyak as a 12-month non-certified program administrator for special ed, I apologize if I screwed that name up, and the HR addendum, organizational report and addendum. And the student discipline, unless otherwise modified below, the board adopts and accepts the hearing officer's findings and recommendations in the following cases in which students expelled or suspended are prohibited from being on school grounds and school-sponsored activities without the prior written permission of the principal. Student number 4205 is expelled for the remainder of the 18, 19 school year. And the following students are receiving EIA's. They are students 3387, 3588, 3589, 3590, 3591, 3592, 3593, 3594, 3595, and student 3598. Is there a motion and a second to approve the closed session consent items?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Segal. Are there any items that board members would like to have pulled for separate consideration? Seeing none, I'll have coordinator then call a roll on the approval of the closed session consent items.
Mr. Segal?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Escobedo?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Rollins?
Yes.
Mr. Scirrano?
Yes.
Mrs. McCullough?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Our next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Jarrett?
For this week's superintendent's report, it's going to be a team effort. We have, the entire team comes together every year to ensure that we go through the task of bringing school back online and bringing in thousands of employees and tens of thousands of students and families back in. There are a lot of things that go into that undertaking and in that endeavor, and we wanted to share our reflections on that. The board has been very specific that this should be, continue to be a high priority to make sure this goes smoothly, and we want to share our initial reflection. So with that, I'm going to, from time to time, click it over to different members of the team. I'll jump in for a few of them. Mr. Zetaker is at a training, and Mr. Dotson is also unavailable to be here this evening, so I'll jump in for those two. And everyone else on our team will be sharing their perspective on how the start of the year went, and we're proud to share this with you tonight. Or you are up first. Transportation.
Transportation.
All right, so the start of the school, the first item goes right to where we're being measured, which is how many of the buses are safe on the roads and have passed their safety inspections on the first instance. Right now, we've had 87 buses pass who have been inspected, and 97% have passed on the first inspection. And then they've all passed on the second, but we're really striving to ensure that they pass on in the first instance. During the first week of school, we did have five accidents. There were no injuries to any students or significant, any damage to the buses. There were some damages to the cars who hit some of the buses, but that's to be expected. We did have late arrival routes in the afternoon and in the, in the morning. We did have 195 worker, drivers who did come to work, and an average of five absences per day. One of the things that isn't up here is some of the struggles that we did have. Transportation did have a number of struggles with some of the routing issues, so I think you probably all saw in the news already, one of those struggles. But I think they've taken steps to address those issues, and so hopefully, we're not going to see that moving forward. Building cleanliness, you did get an in-depth report last week on the building cleanliness, and we did meet our goal of having 80% of our schools mark them as satisfactory or exceeds expectations, so that's really good. And we did have good participation in the survey itself. And then for nutrition services, we are striving to meet our goal of trying to ensure that high participation of meals. I think the lowest participation is in the high school level. We do have open campus, too, which is somewhat of a struggle, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're offering nutritional food to students that they'll want to partake. And so Nutrition Services is making efforts in that regard. Summer construction projects, and I'm not going to go through every one of these projects. Suffice to say that there were a large number of construction projects, from building two new schools to an addition, and a lot of interior finishing work, as well as exterior, exterior work. That impacted the ability for Airmark to get all of our buildings clean. They did it, but it was, it was an exercise for them to do that. This is another, just some of the things that are currently in process that we didn't have all the way completed by the time school opened. So you can see, some of them, of course, are anticipated, like the new school at Constance Lane, that's not scheduled to open until next year. Walker is still being dem- open until next year. Walker is still being demolished, and we're hoping to finish that by the end of October, have the site fully prepared for transfer. The boiler replacement at McIntosh and Flynn didn't impact the openings of school at all there, but it was a project that had not finished, as well. Some of the others did not impact their ability to open school or get in the classrooms, but it, these were still projects that are undergoing at the opening. And I mentioned already, a lot of the interior finishing, so flooring, a large number of schools that got flooring, furniture, painting, so that's ongoing.
Okay, now I'm going to segue to Heidi, to highlight the work of her team on instructional resources.
Okay, so we're going to start with, first, a look at the instrument inventory. And this was a collaborative effort by Bonnie Spurling, our Director of Fine Arts, and Brian Doring, our Dean of Fine Arts. They began by collecting instruments, and, sorry, excuse me. They began by collecting instruments and assessing them. They then reinventoried them according to brand, size, value, and condition. They created a duplicate record system in the Google Drive. They began cleaning and repairing all of the needed instruments, and then they, from that inventory, made a pretty calculated and strategic order of additional instruments, which has been a challenge in the past. So this was a pretty massive effort on the, on the part of Brian and Bonnie, and I think over the long term will save us quite a lot, both in our human resources, in tracking these instruments, and then financially as well. And they also updated procedures and established and communicated them. They clarified a rental process, et cetera. And then they have created a plan for sustainability moving forward. We had several major adoptions, as you know, this year, and so we tried to break them out and give you a plus delta on each of those adoptions so that we could follow up from what you've voted on in the last several months. The new elementary materials ordered included Follett, Defined STEM, and NSTA, Picture Perfect Science. On the plus side, the orders mostly came in by June 30th, with the exception of things that were on backorder. If you do recall, we did ask you to approve Follett two times, because there was an error in the initial order, and as a result, that order went in a little bit late. So we are still working on fine tuning and making sure that everyone has absolutely everything they need, but we estimate we were about 80% complete by the first day of school. Defined STEM is an exclusively online resource, and there were a couple of hiccups with the login from Defined STEM, and so we were able to just kind of create a generic login, and then blast that to teachers so that they could get on as soon as possible. And then NSTA, everything came in as we expected it to. We had an additional supplemental order, and that's still coming in. In middle school, we ordered both for social science and for ELA. For social science, everything was quickly delivered once it came in, and if it was ordered after July 1st, because we split funding between fiscal years, it was delivered to schools by the first week of school, so not the first day. In ELA, the only complication we had there was with the eighth-grade text, as it was delivered late, because it was on backorder from the company. In high school, we had two adoptions, Integrated Math I and Global Studies. Integrated Math I went very smooth. Everything came in as we expected it to. And I'd also like to add that we had, I think, 92% of our teachers attend the four-day training over the summer, which was amazing. And then for Global Studies, everything was in district by June 30th, all to schools before the start of school. But there were some changes in master scheduling, and so we needed to order some additional teacher additions, and we're working on that now. On the IT and IS front, we provide just kind of an overview of the tickets that were opened and closed, and so you can take a look at these graphs. I won't go through them in detail, because they are there for you, and if you have questions, we're certainly happy to answer them. But let's go ahead and take a look at the next slide, which is Information Systems. The total tickets that we closed were 147, and those are broken down by system for you. Perhaps of interest, though, would be the next slide, which is our mean time to closure. And there's two things to note here. One is the window of closure. On the taller graph, 8.23 days, those are all tickets closed between 8:20 and 8:24. That means those were tickets that could have been opened prior to our construction projects and couldn't be closed over the summer. The second graph is tickets opened and closed between 8:20 and 8:24, and our mean time to closure there is 1.21, so we're pretty proud of that number. If you look into, the next is our call queue stats, and this shows you just how long, how many calls came in, and what the average call time was. So you can see that we had a high volume of calls, 1,185 from 8:20 to 8:24, and that our average call time was about 16 minutes. In terms of outages, as you'll recall, there was some significant challenges at the start of school last year, and we don't see a repeat of those challenges again this year. And in fact, if you look at the next slide, which is our uptime, this shows you exactly how much uptime there was for each critical application. And then finally, in terms of what's available for teachers and for students, we're pretty proud of this number. By the start of school on day one, we had 95.83% of classroom technology installed and ready for use. There were two exceptions, one, a Guilford Computer Lab, and then two, Rolling Green Six Classrooms. We had those rectified by the end of the day to have 100% of classroom technology installed and ready for use by teachers and students.
Thank you. Now I'd like to jump in real quickly. The Welcome Center sees a very, very large volume of families. It's very much kind of the front line of the work that comes in. And there were two significant issues that we're going to look for, for improvements moving forward. One is, we had to do a better job of making sure we have clear communication at the secondary level, and particularly the high school level in the Welcome Center. We had multiple families that were told, showed up at the high school, sent to the Welcome Center, and then sent back and forth. And so, anytime you send a family multiple places in the same organization, it sends a really, really bad message and very poor customer service. And so, the folks at the Welcome Center, I think, did an exemplary job there. And so we just need to really do a better job of making sure our communication at the building level, and at the school, or, excuse me, the school level and the Welcome Center, that we're on the same page from a procedure standpoint. And then translation assistance, we really continue to need to make sure we are equipped for all different types of translation assistance provided there. Registration support?
Registration. So our registration process is actually run completely centralized through the Continuous Improvement Department, and so that allows us to make improvements on our systems and structures each year. So one thing we were able to do this year is to host spring registration across the district, and 100% of our elementary schools participated. And that yielded some really positive results. One of the results is that it did decrease the wait time for registration, both in the spring and when we hosted again in the fall for our parents, making it overall a more succinct and user-friendly process. It also increased the turnaround time for packets. One of our goals this year is to ensure that all of our packets are entered within the first 10 days of school prior to our 10-day drop, and that they are accurately entered into our system, so we have that first line of clean data. So that allowed for more time for those packets to get turned in, so our accuracy could be done over the summer. Also, what that did is it decreased the workload for office professionals, who really have a short turnaround time when we just host registration in the fall. Some support that we were able to offer is that prior to the registration process, my team were able to go to every single school and offer support on how to create a really smooth process for registration, anything from creating tables to the flow, just to have a reflection on what information has to be shared at the beginning of the year. And so process improvements were offered based on past practice over the past 10 years of registration. We also, this year, went through over 11 weeks in the summer, and went through 100% of our student files to ensure that we were in compliance, both our paper copies and in our system. So we're able to do a lot of process improvements over the summer, and we will be doing audits throughout the year to ensure that that work is sustained. In addition, we were able to actually offer hands-on support. The registration process, especially at the secondary level, can be quite time-intensive, so we were able to offer our entire team out to the schools. So we're able to sit in one half of our schools to offer that hands-on support. And in addition, finance partnered with us, and they were able to support at two of their high schools to decrease fee lines. So overall, we really had a really nice transition into a different way of registering, and we're looking for more improvements to put in for next year. So overall, we have really great feedback on our process.
Okay, next slide is describing our master scheduling, which impacts a lot of departments. It's, actually, it's almost a year-round project. We have meetings today with our middle school folks to plan out the calendar. Starts as early as getting the high school planning and a middle school planning guy together, and offering courses to students. And, you know, getting an early start on that helps us to meet our goals. One is to hand out schedule of registration, which we were always able to do. Wasn't always the case when we first began. Those of you who've been on the board for a while might remember that being an issue. The metric we're looking at today is the percentage of teachers with balanced schedules, which means the number of students that are on their course, in their courses, are contractually within the limits. So secondary teachers are limited to 150 students per day, and then elementary, it's a number based on the grade level. So we're at 95% balanced. We wait until the 10-day drop, and then we make some adjustments, because we do, we do have students that don't show up, and then the other 5% typically are balanced within those 10 days or shortly after that, right, Paul? All right, next slide. And this is, this is a new metric that we're following. I think it's a spot-on work by our HR department and our, our schools, that we start projecting enrollment in January, December, January, to help build the master scheduling. And the number we projected, and the number where we landed, as you can see, is pretty spot-on. So that helps with our work. The challenge is, you can see the next slide, is sometimes the kids don't end up in the same school. So we project the number of overall students, but pinpointing them to the actual schools is a challenge, especially at the elementary level. So you can see that the schools that are most above the projected amount are typically elementary schools. However, we did have a spike in enrollment at Eisenhower and Flynn above our projections, and that comes in late in the summer, and it makes it difficult for scheduling and allocations, especially with our teacher shortage. Okay, I'm going to step in for Mr. Zetiker. And with staffing challenges, I think the big story here, and this is something that really is involving my work as a superintendent with other superintendents, that's involving work statewide. I was able to forward you a 27-page document that the state of Illinois put together about the teacher shortage. We've talked about the RU pathway. We've talked about our efforts to have a faculty and staff that looks more like our student population. We've talked about quality. I mean, this is so much bigger than this year. But just to highlight where we are this year, you know, we had a total of 59 1.0 vacancies to start the school year. One of the big reasons that happened was not because we suddenly became aware that, oh, gosh, we don't have these positions filled, but we had a lot of late movement. I really want to highlight that bottom number, where we had 43 FTEs resign within one month of school year. If you look at state policy, what's supposed to happen is, if you move within 30 days, this is on the books, your teaching license should be held and pulled. Nobody enforces that, including the state of Illinois, even though that's on the books. So what we're going to be working to do to address this core issue is working with other superintendents in the region to create a system where we are, I've really laid it out, that there's going to be two ways we approach this as a region, because it's mostly interregional sharing. I mean, certainly, there are some people that leave the state or the country, or issues like that, but a huge number of those 43 are local. And what ends up happening is, we take from other people, other districts in the last month, and they take from us the last month, and the longer, the further back you stop the changing, the sooner that everyone can stabilize across the world. Because this is not unique to the Rockford Public Schools, I'm going to be clear. This is happening across the state. And when you have a really tight labor market like this, this is a big issue. So the reason I'm belaboring this is because there's going to be more to come on this larger, larger issue. So what I'm going to propose is that we honor what is on paper and say that we won't take from other regional districts within 30 days, and they won't take from us within 30 days. And if we can stop that, that really points to our issue. If you look at the school that was most disproportionately damaged by this, it was Kennedy Middle School. Kennedy had nine 1.0 vacancies open up within a month of school. We were fully staffed at that building, and then we're not. And that is not okay for the students that are served by that building. And what is happening time and time again is either people are holding on to their position and not telling us, they are taking the position but are continuing to apply for other jobs, and kind of treating it like a college, a prospective college student might with a safety school, hey, I'm, I know I'm in at school, college X, but I'm going to wait until, to see, because I really want to go to college Y. And so, this is happening over and over and over again in our region, so we really have got to put a stop to it. The other alternative is, if the school, if the other regional schools don't want to participate in that strategy, we, of course, could take a much more aggressive stance on building and penalty clauses, adding and signing bonuses, et cetera. We'll certainly look at all different options. But you can see with the bilingual vacancies, the Kennedy issue, and the 43 leaving, that this is not just a lack of planning, or it suddenly dawned on us that we had to hire 2,000 teachers to start the school year. That late movement and the scarcity of some of these positions really makes this hard to do. So this is something we're going to be very, very focused on. Another thing that really makes it tough, and we adjust to this, but we had 500 students enroll at the kindergarten level after June 20th. So we overstaffed for that. But with all the things we're seeing with overall population changes, this is a real risk for us, because every time you're off on that and you overhire, you're talking about an average cost of 65,000 per FTE plus benefits, averaging out to 15,000. So if you're off by one and have those class sizes nice and low, certainly no one complains about that at the school level. But those are resources you can invest somewhere else. So continuing to find ways to reach out to our families to get earlier enrollment is huge for us as a district because of the pressure it puts on, on the proper staffing levels. And of course, those 500 students don't all neatly arrive in perfect slots of 23 students per school. They, they, there's too many in one school and not enough in others in many cases. So those are things that are challenges we're confronting regionally and locally. We'll see where we land on fall housing report. I think we're actually bigger than the 1802 number now. I think we've, we continue to have more students come in, but we'll see where that ultimately lands. I think that does speak to a larger issue we're going to have to monitor very closely, is, we used to have enrollment trends that were closer to 2,000 students in a cohort, so we're going to see where this lands. I'd heard the number would be, was going to be closer to 1,900, so we'll see where we ultimately land with the fall housing report. But this at least gives you a sense of how late arriving that, that student population is. I'm going to now turn it over to our CFO, Michelle, to talk about fee collection and finance, something we've worked very hard on in the registration process.
Thank you. Yes, as Dr. Jarrett had mentioned, we worked really hard on the fee collection process for the past year, year and a half, and there's significant improvements in that area, as you'll see. So we support the schools directly by registration, by getting the registration set up with the in-touch process, so that way we can take payments. We also support the schools by processing fee waivers and providing training to the school office professionals throughout the year. So just to give you an idea of what it takes to get the registration in touch set up, we work with Information Systems on eSchool. So in eSchool, we have the schedules. The schedules need to be populated into in-touch, so that way we can feed the students. We also work with Nutrition Services. They have a system called NutriKids, and that's where we get the fee waivers. There's direct certifications for individuals who receive state assistance, so we can use those to waive our fees. We also, then, at that point, we can assess the fees in in-touch, because we're set up to do so at that point. Then, we take that file that we took from the NutriKids software, and we can waive all those students in there. So when they go to register at the schools, they won't have their fee assessed, where we have to then take an application. It's automatic at that point. And then now the schools can collect the money. Just to give you, again, just the volume of direct certification waivers that we have, we had 16,000 fee waivers that came into the district through this file that we're talking about. But we also send out 16,000 letters. So we are sending those out, and this year, it was only within a three-day process. I primarily have one person doing this, so it was quite a heavy lift this year, but she got them all out and on time, so it was great progress there, with some, you know, barriers that we had. So that's 57% of our population comes in with direct cert waivers. The remaining fee waivers, there's additional parent, or different, additional students that are eligible for the fee waiver. So the parents will apply using a manual application. We also process those. So we're determining eligibility at that point, and we have 30 days to make that decision. We try to get those out as quickly as we can, so that way those fees aren't assessed on the students' accounts. quickly as we can, so that way those fees aren't assessed on the students' accounts. We've been really promoting the increased online fee payments. So, we've been promoting that, because less work for our staff, it gets cash out of our hands, we have a reduced risk of error, and it's a win for, all around, basically, for all of our departments. So, we had a 409% increase, and to put it in dollar value, because that number's very large, we went from $5,000 to $26,000, just in online fee registrations. This is during early registration. So, it's only during early registration. Everything was online, so we're really pretty proud of that increase in one year. This chart, we'll go over the August collections. So, this is a typical registration period. So, you can see, we increased again for the August collections at the school. So, even though the parents were coming into the schools to register, they still chose to pay online, and we had an increase there of around $50,000. We also show the credit card online payments, which slight increase there, but overall, a big increase for online payments this year. We also, we had a rough start with in-touch process, you know, a year and a half ago or so. And, this year, we are really happy to have all the schools balance out their drawers, basically, close out everything. Everything was balanced. There's a lot of, a lot of cash going through there, and they were balanced and ready for guarded pickup. That's on the scheduled date. Registration was Tuesday and Wednesday, and they were all processed, ready to pick up on Thursday and Friday. So, elementary schools were done on, ready for pickup on Thursday, and then, high schools on Friday. And, last year, as comparison, we had a lot of problems. We had to schedule special pickups for guarded to come in and pick up, because they were just having trouble balancing. It was a new software. We've, you know, ironed out a lot of the problems throughout this past year. So, it was a success there. And then, we also provide live training. We had a lot of new office professionals, so we wanted to make sure that they were ready to take payments, and we wouldn't, we didn't want to lose any ground where we had gained a lot for the cash receiving process. So, we did hold that before registration, and they were ready to accept payments and knew how to do that. And then, we provided, as Dr. Monson had said, we provided two finance team members, actually went out to the schools, for two days to decrease the fee lines. During this process, we also noted some improvements that we can make, because they have a different lens out there, and they came back with some improvements we can make. One of, one of them is as simple as adding additional credit card machines. So, we are going to look at that. But, sometimes it just makes it, takes another set of eyes to look at this. And then, we do have, we did this last year, and this year, we have phone support. So, we have one person manning the phones for all the schools to call in if they're having trouble with knowing how to do their deposit, or with any problems that they're having. They also can call the vendor for online support, but they choose to call our internal person who supports all of this. We had a decrease in phone support. I don't have the actual data on that, but I was manning the phones last year, too, and I didn't have to man them, and neither did my replacement, the executive director of finance currently. So, we only had a few phone calls, and last year, we were, we had a lot. So, so overall, our wins were proper cash handling. We had timely closing out of the drawers. It was managed very well. We also had reduced workload for the office professionals at the school, due to the increase in online payments. And then, we had 100% of the direct certification fees waived in touch, which is important, because the parents, you know, fees are correct when they're going in to pay. We don't have to do refunds, and it's just better customer service. The schools also provided some feedback. So, Guilford registration was much easier with in-touch. She loves it out there, and she's been doing this a while. Marshallville School had an increase of $16,000 in credit card and online sales. The challenges that we had was NutriKids software rollover. They had to roll that over, as you might remember, I was talking about the direct certification file that we needed. So, that was four weeks late. Finance, you know, as I mentioned earlier, had only a few days to process, but we did get that complete. And then, annual office professional training was held after the registration, our normal annual office professional training. So, we just ended up doing our own training, which was fine, and just called it, just had the office professionals come into our office to make sure that they knew how to take the money the day that registration was held. So, our plans for next year is, obviously, is to make sure that NutriKids rollover is timely. We don't want to just do it in three days, so we wanted to have four weeks to process all those. We also want to ensure that the direct certification letters are mailed before registration begins, so the parents know whether or not they're responsible for fees when they come in to register. And then, we want to make sure that we train all the office professionals before registration begins.
Alright, thank you. And, with that, we can either move on to the next phase of the meeting, or we can take any questions or comments.
Questions or comments, I think would be appropriate. So, Mr. Connor.
So, two things. One is, this is a good summary, so thank you. Like, the visuals, generally speaking, is quite good. I think a couple of these things, having maybe a side, not necessarily on here, would help. My example is on transportation. Excuse me. I know that there was some issues with the software. So, I think that slide, that number five, just something that would have said, you know, we had the following issues. And, so noting that would have helped. Good to see the building cleanliness, which we went through and went through a lot of detail on that. I think one question on the food services would be, is, I know we had 67% overall, but, and you kind of mentioned this, is what is our real target, and what do you think is practical? Because I think the high school one in particular, I mean, I commend the fact that we're trying to make that higher, but I think, you know, that one might be a little bit harder, and it might be more realistic. And the others, I also note that we had talked about the fact that the difference between breakfast and lunch was also fairly substantial. But, again, this is, this is good info, and it's not really a criticism, more to say that there might be some additional details that are on the side of it. I think the only thing I'm gonna say is that, as I looked at the instructional ones, it's kind of interesting on some of these, that we had a number of things that were ordered, you know, the social science and so forth, and back orders. And the only question that leapt into my mind is, you know, is this kind of standard? Are these things we should expect? Are there things we can do with the process to, and I'm not expecting answers for all this, but I'm just saying, that would have been something else that I would have liked to have seen. Then, I think the only other thing I'll say is that on some of these, I've said this before, and actually, a couple of them did do this, is show year-over-year changes. I think that's always helpful. And I looked at Natch, you know, being the IT nerd I am, I of course did look at the ticket statistics and said, oh, you know, what was that versus last year? Because I know we had other challenges the year before. So, some trending on this, I think would be helpful. I think the only other comment is that, and I know that the call queue stats and some of those things, the one comment I will make is, 16 minutes, depending on what your standard is, is actually kind of long for a call. So, I think that's one where I'd like, I'd kind of like to know, you know, maybe it's the nature of the calls and some of that. The last one was on what Mr., or Dr. Bosberg did. Oh, sorry, one other thing. It showed Cronos as having this uptime, and then, you know, lo and behold, on that one Tuesday, they had the outage. So, it just seemed, you know, some of these, on the, on the uptimes were kind of funny on, on how they showed up. I, I think the one thing that I will say is that on some of these, as much as I appreciate you summarizing it, registration support, for example, wait lines, you know, went down and so forth, I would have liked to have actually seen, again, year-over-year, you know, oh, it was an average of 10 minutes, and now it's five minutes, you know, that, just simple things. So, I'm not asking for a lot of detail. I think the one, I'm sorry, I gotta find it. Oh, yes. 95% of the teacher schedules were balanced. You did answer the question. But, man, when I read that the first time, I was like, I had no clue what that meant. And I also suspect that that was only for high school, right?
Secondary.
No, or I'm sorry, secondary, okay. I, I think putting some of that in perspective would help, right? You know, if you just say 95% were balanced, I'm like, cool, should that number be 98, or, you know, and, oh yes, this is an improvement. And I know master scheduling's always a bear, but, you know, those kind of things. Just, that would be my suggestion, that on some of these, some kind of context. Again, truly appreciate you keeping this at a high level, so I'm not asking for a lot of detail, so.
Okay, Mr. Escobedo.
Yeah, so I think actually, Mr. Connor already touched a little bit on my comment, which was the registration wait times. If we could have some numbers, because it's nice to see that they're pointing up or trending down. But, is, is that an hour? Is that 15 minutes? Specifically, I did get comments from a couple of parents on specific schools. So, I guess I'd like to see if someone can follow up on what were some of the schools that had challenges during registration. If someone could just follow up, so I can get back to those individuals and see, maybe even with some numbers, say, we had a challenge in the school, but looks like our overall district is doing good, so.
Mr. Dixon. I'm gonna echo what Mr. Connor said, that this was very informative, it, especially with the teachers, 43 absences. I guess, one of the questions I had was on 24, class, classroom techs installed. I guess 95% of it was done. Okay, I see it now. Guilford computer lab, do, okay, I skipped over that. So, it did have, do we know why they didn't have power? The Guilford lab?
I believe we were waiting for some electrical outlets to be installed. I think there was a change in the power source, and that we were waiting for that project to be completed before we could then install, reinstall all the equipment.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Rollins.
I just want to echo what I said at the committee of the whole, which is, from what I'm hearing anyway, that this went really smoothly, much, much more smoothly this year than, obviously, last year. And actually, pretty smoothly overall, so kudos to everybody. When I first got on the board, the first few years, we had some rough falls beginning of school year, and we made an effort to correct that. And, you know, my perception, I guess, if I, one lesson that I think maybe we, I've learned, or we've learned, I hope, is that I think what happened last year is that we thought that everything was fixed, and we could just go on autopilot. And I hope that the lesson that we internalize here is that you can never go on autopilot, and that every summer, this needs to be a focus to make sure that the schools are ready to open. You know, Mrs. Powers, God bless her, used to remind us of that regularly. And, so, you know, I'll take over her role, and I guess I'll start reminding us that this needs to be a focus every summer, that we make sure the schools are ready to open. On the teacher shortages, that's, that part bothers me, and I know that some of it is what's going on. But, you know, this isn't just an issue, even if we can at this point, of finding 59 teachers to plug into those classrooms. The people who are available now are not necessarily the people that you might hire earlier. So, that's, there's kind of a flow-through effect there, and it'll, it'll flow through our, our district throughout the rest of this year. So, a couple of questions, questions, comments. And I do understand the financial impact of this. We don't want to be overstaffed. Our average cost per teacher is about $85,000 a teacher, I think. Newer teachers are probably lower than that, but still, if you end up with 10 extra teachers, that's $600,000 to $800,000 over budget. We don't want that. But, even having said that, with the teacher shortages that we've been talking about, and these sort of numbers, and this sort of movement that we're starting to see, I kind of wonder if we shouldn't be just making more offers over the summer, and, and knowing that we'll, we'll have places to plug them in. So, we might want to think about doing something like that. I will share that I've heard from enough unconnected sources that I have to wonder if there's some truth to it, that we're too slow in making offers, and that we lose teachers to other districts because of it. I've heard that from multiple sources now. So, I'd ask that, I was hoping Mr. Zetiker would be here, but he's not, but I would, I would ask Mr. Zetiker to look at our processes to make sure that-
Mr. Zetiker has that as one of his five areas of focus, is, he has an OKR on, on new hire turnaround time, and I think the goal is 48 hours. So, that is a metric that they're focusing on, all the processes that sport that, that's clearly an area of need for us.
I just wanted to ask the question, so-
I'll do my best to channel Mr. Zetiker when I can, and if not, when I can't, I'll punt.
Okay.
I'm just asking the question, so these people that leave us in the lurch, do we, do we, I don't know if I can use this term or not, but blackball them for reemployment in this district, to make sure that under no circumstances will we ever make them an offer again? Because maybe we should make it, be making it clear to people that we're gonna do that. I'm just asking the question.
Okay.
That's one I don't know the answer to, but I think that's something I can bring back to Mr. Zetiker to ask. Again, what we're hoping to do as a region with this work is to, we ultimately are doing this to each other in a big way, and I don't know that I have consensus with superintendents, and it would have to be voluntary, and we would have to have probably different relationships with different districts. But, if every single district in our region at least honored that 30-day rule, essentially, there'd be the same movement, but the, the game of musical chairs would stop 30 days earlier, which would, I would hope, do a lot less disproportionate damage, because we would have to know by that point if somebody was leaving our district or not. Yes, people could still move out of town and out of our region, but the vast majority of this is, seems to be people that are waiting on that, that better offer. And, and so, we're gonna work really hard to address that regionally. And if we can't address it regionally, then we will talk about the things you've just, you've discussed, and probably a combination of this, actually, of making, looking at signing bonuses, looking at penalty clauses, and looking at overhiring. But, all of those things cost money, and in an environment where we're also trying to hold the line on our tax levy, et cetera, we have to do the best we can to weigh those two interests.
I was just talking about making it clear to people that if they do this to us, that they will at least never work in this district again, which is less drastic than yanking their licenses from the state. But, at least that, there would, there would be some consequences to them to actually doing it.
Right.
On the kindergarten enrollment, we actually did have these issues back five, six years ago, seven years ago, when I first started on the board. And we, we did some pretty drastic, I don't know about drastic, but in-depth efforts over the summer to try to get out in the community to register people in kindergarten. As I recall, we had tables set up at the mall, we sent teams into some of the public housing complexes. And I kind of wonder, again, if that's something where we made an effort, it actually, you know, paid some results, but then, you know, we, we thought everything was fixed, and we stopped doing it. Maybe we're still doing all those things. I guess that's my question.
We really are. We're, I've been really impressed with the efforts our welcome centers made to Target, and the partnerships we built with our early childhood program. I think this speaks a lot to regional mobility, and just some of the challenges we have with connecting with our families. If anyone else wants to jump in, Matt from the schools team, or Heidi from an early childhood perspective, or Kelly, just from some of the work you've done, anything you guys would add to that? I, I don't think it's been a lack of effort. In fact, I think the welcome center is doing more than they ever have. It's been a real source of frustration, I know that.
Nobody wants to jump in?
No, no.
That's, that's okay. You don't, you don't-
But, yes, Mr. Rollins, I will certainly follow up. And just, in general, the, this, what's nice about this comprehensive report being put together, I really agree with Mr. Connor, that sometimes context is lacking, and Jaime mentioned this as well, Mr. Escobedo mentioned this as well. So, I think what we have to do is, we will keep a relatively constant format, which will do what Mr. Rollins pointed to, which is making sure this remains an area of focus. But, we will also start to see that longitudinal year-over-year data. The key is, was laying down a draft of this, and really having it be an all-in effort, and memorializing how we did this year. And then, we will start to have additional context moving forward. So, we really appreciate all those suggestions about additional context. And, Mr. Rollins, I will follow up on the welcome centerpiece as well, see if there's anything that they did not do in this year that they had done in the past.
Now, I just had a question that I don't know if anybody here can answer. How is the state defining low income when it comes to the state report card? I know they changed the definition pretty drastically within the past few years. And the reason I'm asking the question, I looked it up, because of the direct cert number that I saw on this chart that shows we're 57% direct cert. But, when I look on the state report card, they're reporting us as, at least in 2017, as 51% low income. So, what, I know they're two different things, but I guess that's my question. What is the state, how is the state defining low income? Why is the number below our percentage for direct certs? Does anybody know the answer to that? Does anybody know the answer to that?
That is another excellent question. Thank you, Mr. Rollins. And I would say we did have our resident expert here in the room, and he just exited a few minutes ago. But I'll say, in general, and I'll get a more specific answer for you, and we can respond via email, but in general, it depends, the question is, in what context? So there are different ways that we measure low income, depending on the context of the report card and depending on the measure. It makes for a very complicated analysis and complicated data integrity as well. So what I'd like to do is kind of leave it with the general statement, and then I'll follow up with Dr. Wolf, and we'll make sure that we're clear on how the state is now defining it, because it has changed several times.
We'll send that out in an email to the board.
Thanks. Mr. Dixon?
I just did a study on that, because I had a class I had to do about a month ago. And so, so their definition was anything that's getting assistance from government that was there.
Interesting. All right, well, my last comment is going to be that I appreciate all the work that the administrative team has done to make the school, back-to-school start go so well, and it is becoming more and more obvious that process improvement is becoming ingrained in the way people are thinking. Okay, so thank you, Dr. Munson, for that. Okay, so, so, I mean, I too received many emails that were very positive about the registration. So people were aware that things were much smoother and went better, so congratulations. So, okay. Thank you for a great report. We'll move on then to our new business, which is our first item is thirteen A, the course proposal with contract for pathway for collaborative leadership teams. And Dr. Jared, I think you're presenting this.
Yes, Dr. Bosberg and I have been working on this proposal with the REA, and I know this is what, the board is anxiously awaiting another slide deck after the previous slide deck. So we're going to go back-to-back on you here, my apologies. But I will go through this relatively quickly. A number of, a number of board members have been exposed to this through the district leadership team proposal. We've, we've talked about it pretty extensively as a concept, but I will be happy to present this particular contract. And Dr. Bosberg, please interject as you see fit. The pathway for collaborative school leadership teams, this is our attempt to work to take the concept of us versus them when it comes to problems that are occurring at the school level. Us, meaning potentially faculty and staff versus them versus kind of downtown. It can also mean us versus them in terms of building-level administration versus faculty and staff. And hey, that's your problem to figure that out, as opposed to that's our problem. And basically, in a nutshell, what we're saying is we want to figure out how we can scale up interest-based problem solving. Now, for the board members, many of you participated, you know, this is not a silver bullet, but what it does do, it's kind of like learning a foreign language. It gives you an ability to have a common language and a common knowledge base that is used to solve problems together. Doesn't mean every problem gets solved. I mean, some problems are just really intractable, tough problems, where we disagree on how the resources should get sliced up. But what we do want to scale up is that in many, many cases, these are communication problems, and there is a viable solution at the building level, and we're really trying to work out a way to deal with that. So our current focus is on REA leadership and district leadership, and we want to scale that interest-based bargaining and the district leadership teamwork that we do, and ultimately translate it into every building in the district. So we do this basically at the district level with REA leadership and with district leadership and board leadership. What would our district look like if in forty-four and the next year, in forty-one buildings, every building built its capacity to have those same kind of conversations? Again, it is not, does not mean life will be perfect, but it does mean there will be a lot higher level of capacity to solve problems at the building level, as opposed to bringing in a union leadership from the district level or building in district leadership to solve problems. And when you look at alternative choices, one alternative would be, hey, why don't we just train? We've got a bunch of people who are training this. Why don't we just have union leadership and district leadership do it ourselves? What about the status quo? Aren't we doing okay in this area? And the third idea would be to add the course and do it as kind of a one-time training, but not entered into the learning management system. And so ultimately, we believe that we do want to bring in an outside provider. We do want to have the training, really build the capacity of building level, and we'd want it to be sustainable. So that's why we want to do the LMS. Our concern is if we did it in-house and avoided some of that cost, there's, there still is some capacity that we need to gain there. But number two, when you look at rolling that out, part of the issue is, a lot of the buildings we'd be training don't trust the way we would want them to yet because of some of those training issues. And so for us to come in as the, as downtown or the district office or the centralized union leadership, in many cases, some of the buildings that need the help the most see that as part of the problem. So we're hoping that by bringing in some outside capacity, as well as some outside perspective, that will help with the trust level as well. We're using our new provision in the collective bargaining agreement to talk about building three credit hour courses. This would be forty-eight hours of training total. The forty-eight hours would not just be seat time, it would be a combination of their eight building committee meetings that they have already, that these folks would be working on, as well as course time, as well as reading and outside work that would be managed through the learning management system. Essentially, the way the course would work is, teachers and principals in about ten of our buildings would have common assigned readings. They would reflect on those readings and talk about them in a class session once a month. Then they would practice that at their building committee meetings, and they have eight of those. And of those eight, we'd have three of them where they'd get some coaching and some feedback, so people could actually watch how they solve problems together at their building committee, and then we'd repeat it. Just keep doing that every month. And by the eighth iteration of doing that, and a common reflective project to the end, we think this would really make a big difference. The target is to get ten buildings. Dawn and Paul and Matt and Joanne are particularly going to be sought for their input. So our union leadership and our schools leadership team are really looking at places where we think we can do the most good to start with. And we're also going to have other criteria based on survey data. Where is our employee engagement survey data demonstrating the greatest challenges? We would be able to do four teachers and a principal in a building, total of fifty people. The cost is twenty-three, seven fifty. That is basically a day rate that the Consortium for Educational Change charges. Most of that is their actual time teaching the course, but some of it is involved building it. The sustainability number will be lower because there will be no additional cost for designing. The schools team, the HR team, and principals leadership team, and our schools team, they're all going to have to put in a ton of time, plus we're going to be asking a bunch of time from our REA leadership as well, in order to do this, as well as any teachers that move on the salary scale with the three-credit course that they take. And this process has been vetted really thoroughly at the cabinet level. I brought it to the principal team. We brought it to district leadership team. Tonight, we're getting it vetted by the board. So again, this is the kind of comprehensive approach we're taking and moving forward. Our hope would be to have this course up and running and the schools selected by October. That would allow us to do about eight months of iterative training, again, with that cycle of read about it, talk about it, practice it, rinse, repeat. And opportunity cost, hey, we're using a lot of staff time, talking about issues and waiting for someone from outside of the building to come in and solve the problem. We have really high turnover in buildings where these skills are absent because of staff morale. There's no way you're focusing on student achievement to the extent that we'd like to, if you're constantly debating about whether you should have an extra meeting here or there, or what the protocols in the parking lot should be, or a whole myriad of other things that can take up our time at those building levels. We can assure you that when the skills are not there and the capacity is not there, the principal and the teacher leadership spends a lot of time talking about topics not related to student achievement. And then finally, this whole issue of the downtown or the district office and buildings, you know, at some point, we have to be on the same page and all rowing in the same direction. Our school scorecard, we hope will help with that work, but we cannot be in a situation where buildings don't feel connected to greater district objectives. When you look at the cost, we're looking at an estimated cost of four seventy-five per participant, so I think that's very reasonable for, when you look at the amount of comprehensive training and coaching that we're going to be providing here. And we would try to impact ten schools. That's nearly twenty-five percent of our schools that would be impacted. We could scale this up more quickly beyond this year, but we wanted to start with ten. And we'll be reporting back in August and hopefully have a new cohort ready to go, assuming that this is passed by the board this time. And with that, I'll turn it over for questions or feedback. I appreciate your patience as we slog through two presentations in a row.
No problem. Any board member feedback or comments? Okay. Don't see any. Sounds like a good plan.
Actually, there was one.
Mr. Segal?
Could you give us an update of which ten schools you're putting to target?
Yeah, absolutely. Once, once we've selected those, once we've selected those schools, I'll be happy, I think Mary calls in the audience, so we can add that as part of a board update. Thank you.
Okay. Our next item is the Board of Education School District Healthcare Plan Document. I'm not sure who's presenting that. Oh, there she is, okay. Sarah's.
Good evening. Yes, this is presented, what we were looking at, it has been out there for several years, and it's kind of time to update it. And then the updating and restating, this was the opportunity to make the changes to the laws that have come in under the ACA, so that we could be in compliance per the district and the plan itself. And then there were just some discretionary changes in language where we removed some definitions that are in the plan provisions, materials that are provided to our employees.
Any comments or questions from the board? Okay, both of these items will come back to the board for approval at our September twenty-fifth board meeting. Ms. Holley, you get to do board, the exciting final items on board policies. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
And we want to just, again, talk about the importance of our partnership with the Illinois Association of School Boards. It helps, it helps bring these policy adjustments.
Thank you for that reminder. Okay.
So policy two-point-one-hundred, and I'm going to remind you all that the two-hundred series really deal with board business, so these impact you personally. So two-point-one-hundred is updated to align with federal regulations related to board member conflicts of interest, so basically, you can't have any interest in a contract unless such interest is allowed under state law or federal law. Two-point-two-two-oh provides guidance on board members' access to closed session recordings, so it sets up a process for you to access those closed session recordings. Four-point-one-oh, the four-hundred series deal with operational issues. And so four-point-one-oh requires employees and contractors who have access to the district's network or technology to complete an authorization of, authorization of use of electronic networks and technology form. Four-point-six-zero prohibits food vendors with which the district does business from trying to restrict the district's ability to provide excess food items to food banks or homeless shelters. Four-point-one-one-zero, this modification of the policy is to require foster care students to be transported in the same or similar manner as we transport homeless students. So that, again, is a mandate by law. Now we'll move on to the five-hundred series. The five-hundred series deal with personnel matters, so HR matters. Five-point-one-zero is modify, modifies the district's EEO policy or their equal opportunity for employment policy to identify an additional protected category, namely, individuals who have been granted an order of protection or have applied for an order of protection. And it has some other language modifications in there that's consistent with state law, so a lot of those are just clarifying language. The same with five-point-two-oh. It really rewards the policy to reflect more along the lines as how the Illinois Association of School Boards press policy is drafted, but no major modifications. Five-point-nine-zero adds the DCFS hotline number, as well as another, a number of other hotline numbers for employees to call in the event they have to report abuse or neglect of students. And then five-point-one-hundred is updated to incorporate additional mandated staff trainings. So it gives us a laundry list of mandated trainings for staff, including those required under the concussion act and other new recent legislation that the legislature has...
Approved.
Approved, yes. Any questions on any of these?
Any board member discussion? Okay. These, these will be, again, presented on September twenty-fifth for our approval. Any other business for tonight's board meeting? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Connor, your second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Dixon. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned at eight-thirty-one.